Mr. Honeycutt, any?
All right. It is 5:04 and we do apologize for the four-minute delay. Of course, we were here. And since you all were frolicking, we decided to allow you to end your conversations before getting the meeting started. Thanks to those who are here and certainly to our council members who are present, our administrator, our attorney, our clerk, and our deputy chief administrators, all of you, thank you for your dedication. We're now ready to begin our Planning and Public Works Committee agenda. Mr. Pryor is the chair and all members of council are part of this committee. Mr. Pryor.
Chair. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
In addition to additions.
Clerk and her staff.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Item 2B has been removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, so we only got 2A, which is Miller's Crossing subdivision, public dedication for roads and drainage. What is the...
Mr. Pryor.
Yes?
Mr. Pryor, 2B is that the item that was withdrawn is not that item.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was a letter.
That's still an item that needs to be addressed.
Oh, okay. Tobin Road, oh, I thought that was...
No, sir. No, sir.
All right, so 2A, what is the pleasure?
Approve. Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Saz.
This is about the Tobin Road.
No, number 8, Miller's Crossing.
No, I'm fine.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, 2B.
Mr. Pryor.
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, so this Tobin Boyd Elementary School property, certainly we serve the entirety of Charleston County. It is in District 6, which I've been elected from to represent them and the entire, all the people of Charleston County. Again, based on the request, you know, this request has come to me as a councilperson, it's come to me as the chair, and then now it's coming to this Planning and Public Works Committee, you know, as a request. I did not write a letter, you know, as a councilperson. I did not. I consulted with our attorney, I consulted with the administrator, I consulted with the clerk, because when anybody ever asks me to write something particularly, regardless of what it is, I always consult and ask, and I thought it was odd and strange. The developer, now again, I do, and I'm not going to go into a long, drawn-out soliloquy, but I think many of you already know my position on development. I think we have these urban growth boundaries, nodes, et cetera. There are places where development makes sense. Where I live, particularly in outer west Ashley, when I moved off Bees Ferry Road, it was more rural than it is now in character. I did not want that kind of development, and every time I opened my eyes, there's more development all around me. And so, development has to make sense. As it relates to this particular area whereby I do often agree with the community about certain types of development, this type of development is allowed. By right, the developer has the right to develop exactly what's contemplated for this particular property. Yes, the school, in a sense, is historical in individuals' nostalgic experiences. It has not been designated as such by our HPC or by any other body that designates historical designations, and so we call it that, but it's never been designated that. And the school has dilapidated. Now, over time, I could have seen if the community had rallied together and decided that they were going to go to the school district and try to purchase it even for a dollar or whatever the case is. Nothing has happened, to my knowledge, and you know, I stand to be corrected if it did. But it didn't happen. The building is dilapidated. I know that somebody said, "Well, why don't they move it like they did on Mount Pleasant, the school?" Two different types of structures. This building, in my opinion, and I'm not a structural expert, but I would think that based on the condition of the building, it would not survive and excavate, you know, that kind of thing to move it. And so, as the councilperson, as the chairman when requested, I did not. And certainly, anybody can put anything on an agenda if a councilperson seems that to be necessary. The HPC did send it to us as a request. I would say no for us writing such a letter, because again, they're not asking for a special exception, they're not asking for an upzoning.
By right, they can do it.
I just don't know, and I'm not for a bunch of development. That doesn't make sense. But at the same token, we cannot handpick and cherry pick the types of development that goes in certain communities just because we don't like the developers coming in.
Okay, so before we go to any further discussion, your motion is for denial.
Deny.
Of the request to write.
Second discussion. Now, anybody else? Dr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Milton, I agree with you. I've kind of been inclined, I could have gone either way on this thing. There's a, there was a development in my district, Mr. Evans knows it well, called the settlement, that had a lot of historic artifacts, a lot of old stuff, and the ask was, and there was some, also some SHPO state historic requirements they had to do too, so maybe to the extent SHPO can come in and weigh in and do some of that stuff, but you know, we keep getting these letters asking this council to weigh in one way or the other on things. I sometimes think we're getting out of our lane a little bit on some of these things. So, somebody's got rights to do it. They, I would hope that maybe they'll be sensitive to that sort of stuff. Maybe they can take the bricks and put that into the building or do some form of, something with it, a common area to commemorate that, but I'm sort of inclined to let property rights play out.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boykin?
No, sir. I agree with Reverend Milton and Mr. Moody.
Motion on, Mr. Saz.
I agree with Mr. Moody. That building is pretty old, and I agree with the chairman too. It's a brick building. It's an L-shaped brick building. I don't think it's a movable-type building like the old schoolhouse that was in Snodden was, and that was a much smaller structure too, a little easier to move. But I think that, I think that I'm in agreement with denying. I'm with you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, anybody else before I move on? Mr. Kabowski?
I'd like to hear a great deference to the chairman's district, but I would like to hear more from my own perspective from the preservation society who wrote the letter and the reasons for it. I mean, this, I don't know about writing a letter on their behalf, but if that's the only thing in front of us today, but I'm not...
Well, they asked for the county to write a letter, so if you want to check with them between now and Tuesday, you know, you've got every right to check with them and then let them explain, you know, the reason for doing this. But I do say, by right, you can't take somebody's right away from them just because somebody says, "Well, this is an old historic, you know, artifact, a building." I mean, we just can't do that. And then what's going to happen? We're going to have to get legal involved and have so many lawsuits. So, I mean, I think Reverend Milton made some key points as well as my two colleagues to the right and Mr. Saz. So, we just want, so if you want to know more information, you can rightfully ask them by Tuesday, and then this will come back up on Tuesday for final vote.
All right, good points. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. So, all in favor of the motion to deny signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. All right. That concludes our Planning and Public Works Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor, and we're going to move on to our Finance Committee meeting. Good evening, Ms. Honeycutt. Thank you for joining us tonight. Item 1, approve.
Both approve.
Move and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. The ayes have it. On item 2, there is, before we move to approve those, I believe there's a consent agenda request.
Chairman, thank you. I'd like to move for unanimous for a resolution to honor V-Day in Europe, which is May 8th, but I should have got in sooner, but I'd like, I hope we can do it unanimously.
Probably moved and seconded for the unanimous consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. And so, that'll be 2E. We'll call that 2G.
2A through E.
Thank you so much. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda, item 3A, HMG flood mitigation and elevation.
Both approve of A and B.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. The ayes have it. Item 4, 4A, airport connector.
Move for staff recommendation.
Second. Moved and approved, moved, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. The ayes have it. Item 5A.
Staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Boykin, you were giving us an explanation on this one?
7A, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
Posers nay. I'm going to just be a nay tonight until I can make sure I know what I'm looking at.
Chairman. Yes. Sometime I may have to leave a little early. Can we move up 7A and 7B?
Yes, sir.
Take those and then come back. You can take the 6A and 6B afterwards.
Absolutely. 7A, Airbnb settlement funding allocation, this would be presentation.
As requested by council, staff met and discussed the recommendation on these funds. We focused on the framework of some guidance that we previously had in the form of the council's financial policies, the strategic plan, and the status of what was in the 26 budget, what was included and what was not included, and we developed a list of immediate unfunded needs. This is a, the summary of staff recommendation from our leadership team. We're going to go through each of these priorities. Different deputy administrators are going to talk through these items. I'm going to turn it over to Christine Durant to speak next.
Thanks, Mr. Guile. Just in summary, one of the things we looked at was how do we prioritize the people in our communities and our residents, and that became the governing guidance for how we came up with these priorities. Of course, one of the things, being the first one, housing initiatives. You all have set some new priorities as of last week on the Housing Our Future Plan, and so following what you all have already done with the accommodations tax of setting 15% aside, this represents 15% of the settlement consistent with what the other practices of council have been. Some of the other things that relate to people, you'll hear about, and I know you'll hear more from Justin when he does the FEMA update, but that was our, that was the premise on which everything else was based.
Mr. Durant, before we move forward, question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. And I heard you said 15% allocated for affordable, but don't we already have that in this year's budget, 15% that's coming for housing?
Yes, 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 sir.
So, why, why would we take an additional 15% if we already have 15%? I mean, this is a settlement. And I understand, you know, normally it would have been in there anyway, but you know, my take on this is, I mean, I got a project on Ranger Drive. We've been trying to get funded many, many years of flooding in that area. You know, you've got to go under the interstate, see if you're probably familiar with that, you know, where the CSX rail road placers and all, and so, you know, that was one of the things I would have liked to see happen, you know, in working in coordination with the city, to get that community some type of relief, you know, and to me, that's a housing initiative too, because if your house is flooded and you can't get in, you can't get out of your property. So, you know, that's just why I ask, because I know this year's budget is going to include, you know, 15% from the accommodations.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct. And the 15% that you all have set aside in the budget has gone to the trust fund specifically to work on expanding the number of units. My thinking on this is based on your priority last week regarding critical home repair, that we would set aside this money to continue the critical home repair program that you all had asked us to come up with alternative ways to fund.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Who's next?
Yes.
Just follow, Mr. Pryor was talking about. I'm fine with it, because it is for critical home repair. You can't do stock and have it going out the back door. So, that's, that's, this is critical. But I share your concern, Mr. Pryor, with that, with all that we did through ARPA and now the trust fund, it just, it's getting more and more there where I think some municipalities probably need to step up and play a bigger role too.
Chairman. Yes, sir. Mr. Kabowski?
Can you tell us more about the Visitors Bureau? If we didn't have this, would that be in jeopardy? What, what's that money about?
So, as he continues the presentation, he's going to go through each individual priority that they're listing, and I would simply like to remind council that these are just a list of their priorities. None of these have to be taken, you know, action taken on. The 9.6, you know, is being, through the different readings of the ordinance, move to council contingency, so we can take time to decide on our own, you know, where these ones are going. These are just ideas. Mr. Wareman.
Well, I mean, I'll just speak out from a different perspective here while we're still on the housing. I mean, so, Ms. Durant, I did not fully appreciate that the 15% would not be the same as, well, I knew it would be different money, but would not be treated the same as the 15% of the trust. I thought we were talking about the trust here, and you know, I continue to think that the more emphasis we can put on that early, it saves us emphasis putting it on, you know, those are investments that grow, they build upon each other. We've talked about the revolving nature of those assets. So, you know, I'll say I actually have some consternation the other way of, you know, the idea is if this was sitting in ATAX, then, you know, I think that 15% would maybe by our agreement have to go to the trust. You know, I know it's, well, I don't know. We can talk about that. Whatever. The point is, I don't want the move from ATAX to another fund to somehow cost the trust or cost our housing initiatives, you know, less money in any way. So, you know, I guess I've got a little bit of consternation. I understand we're just talking this through right now, but I'll say that, you know, the more money you can put on the front end early, the more it starts revolving and the more sustainable that program becomes.
Yes.
I'm a huge fan of your recommendation. I know that the home repair money ran out in a hurry, and certainly in my district, I've got a lot of, you know, poverty and a lot of folks that are living in houses that, you know, that are barely habitable. And for me, I'm 100% support for this, and I think the difference is, had it been in the trust fund, I wouldn't be able to make this request, but because this money came from a settlement, this can go all over Charleston County for folks in need, and that has been an excellent program. Thank you.
Allow Mr. Guile to continue his presentation.
Okay. The financial system upgrades, Mrs. Rona is going to talk about that.
Yes, so the county's financial system is the oldest software in the county right now. It was implemented in May of 1998. This money won't replace the system, but it will give us what we feel is our most critical need, which is the digital timekeeping, payroll, and human resource component of that system. Right now, our processes have become very complex and cumbersome, so we hope this will help us with that, and it also hopefully can improve our financial best practices so that we can maintain our financial health and maintain our AAA bond rating.
All right.
Are there any further questions on that? Mr. Thigpen is going to talk about the Public Works Drainage Projects.
Yes, Mr. Tooton.
One quick question, because there was a comment earlier. This has nothing to do with the system for the treasurer that...
No, it's not the tax system. It's our internal financial system that kind of runs the whole county.
Right, and I would like to make a comment relative to just the mention that we throw around, the tax rating, you know, you had the tax rate, not tax rating, you had the credit rating kind of institutionalized even under an antiquated system. Certainly, a new system, you know, would make the county government that much more efficient, but not having the new system is not going to jeopardize our credit rating. So, I want us to stop saying that.
Okay. No, it will not jeopardize it, but financial policies and safeguards is...
Yes, that's right.
...a component in that.
That's right. And again, still, in budget predictions and/or iterations that I've seen, even before this 9.6 million, or $4 million, these things were already in a budget regardless of the 9.4. And so, I just don't want us to make it seem as though if this doesn't happen, then these things were never going to happen anyway. They were already embedded somewhere else. Mr. Thigpen, thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Pryor.
So, is this going to be a shelf ready upgrade? You know, we don't have to go out and get somewhere. This will be some, something that's already been used before, so, because I know a lot of times when you know you go and you upgrade these things, you know, we got caught like that before. It was a new system and it wasn't on the shelf, so this won't be designed for us specifically, but it'll be something to help you all along, right?
Yes, sir. We would go out for biz, just like we do any other system.
All right. That's good. That's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The Public Works Drainage Projects, we have a large need of some of our aging infrastructure that's already in place. Some of the, some of that infrastructure is going to come due. The majority of this money would be spent on what we call cast-in-place liming, so what you're going to do is go in and line the pipe before it collapses. Therefore, you can extend that for another 40 or 50 years, as opposed to going into somebody's yard and having to dig up and make a big mess. So, the majority of that money goes to that, as well as three or four other smaller projects that we need to clean out some outfalls that may be in the salt marsh, as well as extend some drainage pipes in a subdivision to help alleviate some flooding issues that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item is the Visitors Bureau. Based on the same thought process...
Disaster response recovery reserves.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skip that. That's the most important thing. Mr. Davis is going to discuss that.
Yeah, this is, yeah, so I don't, I don't want, yeah, I don't want to see steel directed perches of thunder, but council, FEMA is undergoing a major change with policies and the way they reimburse local government and state government, and so now it's time for local government to really focus on developing a disaster reserve fund to avoid us experiencing a shock to our budget. And what it does, it does help us to position ourselves to better respond to emergencies, disasters, and I'm not just talking about hurricanes or wildfires. We, a terrorist attack, for example, these are things that we need to prepare ourselves for with the sudden changes in FEMA. It also will help us kind of balance out our overtime. That's the bulk of our expense when we go into preparation before an after-disaster. So, this will also align EM at the national level, whereas we are currently have a reserve fund just to balance off our budget.
All right, Mr. Pryor.
So, this question, Mr. Guile. Our rainy day fund. How much do we have in our rainy day fund now to, you know, I know that's like two and a half months' worth of operating expenses, I think.
The rainy day fund is set at 4% of the annual budget, which is about $15 million. There is a nuance to that. If we utilize it, the council policy says that the administrator has to come back with a plan to replenish it. So, in effect, we've built that into that 30% buffer that we've been trying to maintain for our financial health. We spend that 15 million, we would be coming back at a time to restore.
I didn't say 15. I mean, 3 million. So, we, and our rainy day fund, you know, for the operating expenses, we only got 15 million. I thought we used to have like $28 million in that fund for two and a half months' worth of...
The two and a half...
What changed?
The month reserve is actually different from the rainy day fund. 4% of the upcoming budget is around $15 million.
So, we have that now.
That is correct.
And y'all want to increase it to what, 18 million?
No, it's a different reserve.
It's a different fund. It's not the same fund.
I know it's different, but I mean, this $3 million, this is creating, this would be other disasters, at least except hurricanes and natural disasters. Is that what you're telling me?
It's for all, it's for responding after a disaster occurs and for recovery efforts. Without the presentation about FEMA and that impact, if FEMA doesn't give us any money and Charleston County has to bear the recovery effort, 75% of what we would have received from FEMA won't be available. Debris removal probably would run about $15 million for a reasonable size event, and that's not the only thing that we would address. FEMA does, if they pull out and don't fund anything, as Mr. Ant would point out, there's not a recovery for our community.
Right.
There's not that mechanism to do this.
I understand, so this is a separate from our rainy day.
This is trying to plan for that big risk that it appears to be passed down to local governments, and we shouldn't expect the state to cover that delta either.
So, what do we have from FEMA? Has anybody been in touch with us, saying that the money is going to be cut? Have we...
As part of the presentation.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm heading myself. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wareman.
Well, maybe this will get clarified by the presentation, but what I'm sort of, the way I'm looking at this is, and if there's a, just, obviously, it's a different fund, I get that, but it sounds like, yeah, we would have the 15% available in that scenario too, but it's just that with the changes at FEMA, that might not be enough. I mean, so, you know, maybe the question is, does it need to even be a separate fund? But I leave that to y'all, but that's sort of how I'm understanding the request.
Ms. Salisbury is informing me, you know, because I'm always knee-deep in, you know, other things, that the acting head of the FEMA was fired today by the president.
There you go.
Goes to the point, I think.
Yep. So, you know, again, all of these things are for our consideration, and we appreciate it. The Visitors Bureau? Yes, Mr. Boykin.
You know, this is a modest increase, you know, even though it's a separate fund. It's only represents 20% of what we have squirreled away, so in light of those concerns, I think it's very prudent to do it.
Well, it's good for us to know, and these are things for us to consider when we sit down and decide what we're going to do with the $9.4 million. Visitors Bureau?
And following some of the thought process behind the housing initiatives and attaching the 12.5% of the settlement to the Visitors Bureau allows them to continue their efforts to maintain our economy in that tourism sector. They also made a request to consolidate their facilities to make them more efficient in the downtown area.
All right.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
That would summarize the five top priorities that we would have for this settlement.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you, council. There's no recommendation that I'm receiving at this point. I think we just kind of take this as information, and then we continue to talk about it. All right? We're going to move to the...
If I might, I was going to move for staff recommendation. The slide says staff recommendation. Do we need three readings of this? Is that correct?
No. So, again, what we asked, my recollection, and Ms. Salisbury, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pryor asked staff to come back with their recommendations as to what they would like if then council decided in its apportionment of this 9.4, what it would allot for, you know, some of these type things, and so I don't think we're at the point of making a decision on just these items where there may be other items that council itself...
I don't mind sitting on this for a couple, a week or two. Yeah. If we were in agreement, I don't mind, I don't mind sitting on it for a week or two. If we were in agreement, I don't mind, I don't mind sitting on it for a week or two.
Well, until we transfer the funds, because if you leave it in a tax, it's limited. Okay? Yeah, so we have the money, have to remove it. We want to do these other things, it has to go through third reading to move the money, and then we can, you know, designate it as we see fit. But it's restricted if it's in a tax.
Thank you so much. The Green Belt Project Forward Spending Discussion, Mr. Boykin.
I've had the opportunity to sit down with Director Davis and go over some changes to the forward spending policy, and we have a draft that's been circulated amongst county council members by email by me. I would like to move that we adopt a new forward spending policy for our Green Belt program, and in short, it would read as follows. Commitment of future allocations. Applicants may be awarded funding in excess of their current available allocation under the following conditions. One, the applicant secures alternative funding and/or bridge financing for the project amount in excess of their available allocation amount for that cycle. Two, the applicant agrees that the alternative funding and/or bridge financing amount will be repaid to the applicant in subsequent allocation years until the full amount of the awarded project funding is received. And finally, three, the new project applications from the applicant will not be considered until all of the outstanding annual payments are completed. And that's my motion, sir.
All right. I'll second the discussion. So what you're saying is if we got, just say we got a million bucks sitting in this money over here, and the applicant needs a million and a half, okay? They won't secure that million dollars until they go out and borrow the other half a million dollars, and then we would let that other money go, and we would be at a zero balance. And then as the new money comes in, then we would pay them back, but they would be on the hook for the half a million they borrowed and the interest they paid, that's on them.
That's correct. We will not be carrying, covering the finance charges. That would be on them.
So that's, you know, that's the way I see it. So, and it would be zero, to be a net zero, it won't be no negative.
Never be less than zero.
Okay. Mr. Davis, you agree with that, sir? I know you, I wanted to just get your take right quick, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
That's an accurate summary. It's really a commitment of future funding. As it is now, if you award future funds, they could spend that as, you know, as soon as those are awarded. These would just roll in annually until that full award has been paid.
Yes, sir. Good. Well, it'd be a restriction. It'd be, they don't get it until they get their part. Love it.
Ms. Honeycutt?
How does this resolve the issue that we currently have, though, which is when someone comes to us and they want a project, if we're saying, yeah, we're going to give you that project, we're still committing the future funds to that project? So really, all we're doing is making them carry a burden that they really don't have to carry right now. It doesn't resolve the issue of having those resources available for a later project that comes along.
Ms. Boykin?
Ms. Honeycutt, what this does is it stops robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're not pulling money from one bucket to another to cover the shortages, because there will not be a shortage in the Green Belt program. They'll have to get the money from outside of Charleston County's Green Belt program.
Yeah, but we're refunding what they get from outside.
They're only getting it in payments, installments, as new money comes into that bucket. We're not pulling money from North Charleston and sending it somewhere else. This keeps all of those buckets separated, and so all of us in that bucket is all there is to spend, and if they want to do a project, they're going to have to go somewhere else to finance that project or get funds leveraged from somewhere else. It will keep us, we'll never have a negative balance, and we will never have to pull from one bucket of money and put it in another bucket. That was really what the issue has been, is basically taking money from one account and putting it in the other.
I want to be clear, Mr. Davis, have we ever actually run a negative balance, or are we just moving the money from pot to pot?
We've never run a negative balance overall on the funds, but specific urban allocations do currently have negative balances because of the funding that was awarded before it actually came, was allocated to those allocations.
But if we approve a project that takes up all the urban allocation we have left to the end of this program, even if we tell them they have to have financing, we can't let any more urban projects through, right?
So there would still, there are still total projected totals for the allocations for each individual municipality. So maybe it needs to be added to the motion that they could not exceed, their requests could not exceed their total projected lifetime allocation of funding.
That seems like a concern.
I understand what Ms. Honeycutt is saying, and I agree with what she's saying, and again, it goes right back to where we have been, because if there comes a project that sucks up the whole bank, right, not to say that you will allow that to happen, but certainly in smaller increments, that's happening. And so that's where the forward spending comes in, and where there are other funds available in the bank, the bank, we don't see the impact of that because other municipalities or other areas are not using the funds that were allocated to them. And therefore, when other municipalities or areas go into a negative, it's not a big deal because the bank still has money overall. Mr. Wareman, Pryor, Boykin?
Well, I might just be restating what y'all are saying, but if what y'all are saying is what I think you're saying, then I think I agree with you, which is that, you know, it's one thing to solve the overallocation of what has come in and what we're sort of currently looking at, but there are these, what I would consider need to be hard stops of the allocation that in total goes to the urban, goes to the rural, and goes amongst those various entities. So if what you're talking about doing is adding into this motion that those hard stops cannot be forward-spent or anything like that, then I'm absolutely for that, because that's a serious concern of mine.
Forward-spent or committed.
Or, exactly, forward-spent or committed. Basically, we're saying that when you get to the total of City of Charleston, or when you get to the total of the rural allocation, that's it, no more projects.
That's it. You have to wait until the next cycle.
Not at all.
Mr. Pryor?
And, yes, because I think, I was understanding what Ms. Honeycutt was saying. When you run out of money, there's no need to take an application because there's no money. And I, you know, she's smart enough to articulate that herself, but I think that's what she was saying, you know, hey, look, it's no sense in having these safeguards if we still going to be taking applications. So when the money runs out, there's no need to take applications until the pot is replenished. Is that what you're asking, Ms. Honeycutt?
No, I'm thinking long-term, because we're about to hit some of the lifetime expected collections of some of these parts of the program. So for instance, I think it's urban, right? We're already a million and a half overspent, and so it's expected collection in total of the whole program. And so it's going to be hard to keep track of this stuff if we are committing to somebody to repay them over time, and they, then we're like, but you've got your money, you'll just get it in increments with this financing that you're paying for. I don't know. Maybe it vets the project a little bit if they can go get financing.
Thank you, finish. So I think what we're saying is if it's only a million dollars in that account, when the million dollars is gone, that's it. There's no more saying, you know, we, you know, hey, future allocations, and, you know, if no money is in there, there won't be no applications taken.
That's right.
That's what I, that's what I want to see happen, because it doesn't make any sense. Once the money is depleted, until it's replenished, there's no need to take an application.
So right now, in the urban allocation, we only have 75 million in the whole bank left, right?
That is for the projected lifetime, and then those are further broken down into allocations for each municipality.
Right. And so again, you know, we keep saying the same thing, 75,000 in the whole bank. So if Charleston comes up with a project because they've forward-spent many times before and decided that they were going to, you know, there's this great project on wherever, you know, Charleston, you know, in the jurisdiction, and it's $15 million, or 10, or 9, and then North Charleston comes up with this similar-type thing, and then it's whatever the case is. And so you have all of these other, and this is what I've been looking at for five years, particularly in those other municipalities, that never really spend anything. And so we almost roll the dice on the fact that they'll never spend anything, because we know that their applications, they don't have the machinery where they have people whose jobs it is every day to write these applications, you know, for some of these funds or agencies like conservancies or whoever, these other external agencies that specialize in writing these, you know, these, these applications. And so we almost bank on the fact that they will not ever be awarded if then we forward-spend in the other areas, because if those other municipalities are funded fully, we will run out. Mr. Boykin?
Chair, one of my concerns is these projected, you know, lifetime balances or whatever. You know, we get another, you know, COVID or another huge economic downturn, and these, this revenue doesn't come in, and somebody has forward-spent to a point, you know, they're spending somebody else's money because the number's going to go down. They got theirs because they spent it sooner than others. I just want, I want some guardrails on that, and however that needs to be, and I, you know, I'll ask y'all's advice, but I just want to make sure that, I don't know that that limits the limit we need to be looking at. I think we made maybe a percentage of that limit if we're going to go down that road as far as what we're going to allow to go forward.
Have we, whatever you have, did that go through our legal department, or this was just written up by staff?
It was, it came from a previous recommend, a proposed recommend change from the GAB that never was put forward, and then consulting with Mr. Davis is how we redacted it down to this point. But I'm fine to amend it any way y'all want to.
Yeah, let's, let's keep talking about that too, and try to put in language for a hard stop where individuals have reached that threshold and not even commit the funds, you know, because that puts us right back in the same predicament. And right now, we don't have another transportation sales tax, so these are all projected or actual, this is all the money. Yes?
So just to be clear, in Mr. Boykin's proposal, those funds, they would only be accessing their own future funds and not another allocation's future funds.
We, I think we very well understand that, but it is also a sort of, y'all remember when you used to do layaway? Do people still do that? That's almost like a layaway plan, you know? And so, no, that, we understand it fully, and we get it, and we say no. And so we need to modify that a little bit more.
Yes, why don't we pass attorney and her team, because that might be something, and then bring it back to us, so it can be ironclad that it will be, can you work with Mr. Davis and his staff, and then y'all bring us something back?
Based on council comments, I can work with staff and try and figure out a way to incorporate all the comments that have been made.
So can we just defer that until she...
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you so much.
Should we defer this until she comes back?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we move off of this, my question was about the urban unincorporated that's got such a deficit. I don't know how this motion deals with that, because we're the urban unincorporated. So the rules apply to us, or not us, but everybody else?
No, it applies to us.
You know, you see what I'm saying, though?
We have the same bulk pots.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, selfishly, I'd love to see some more money moved into there, but I, that may be a discussion for another day, because I think I've heard Ms. Honeycutt say before, you've got to be ready to strike on big deals, and, you know, Boone Hall or Church Creek, those parcels are so expensive in the urban area, and maybe we didn't plan well enough back in the day, but that could be a discussion for another day. But that's, I don't know that this takes care of that big deficit.
All right. Thank you all for that wonderful discussion. At this time, we're going to have, go back to 6A, our FEMA update.
Hi, council members. My name is Justin Pierce. I got to meet some of you, but I wanted to formally introduce myself. I'm the new director of emergency management here. I started in December. I always assumed my first time I would present to you would be to prep for this upcoming hurricane season, but there is a lot going on right now with FEMA that needs to be brought to your attention. So the purpose of this briefing is informational purposes only. It's to tell you what is currently happening now, where it is going, and what the impacts could be here in Charleston, and what we're doing to get ahead of those. I'll start by saying it's a very, very fluid situation. This presentation has been updated almost every couple of days because there is new news from DC, new testimony, new executive orders, and new fact sheets from this new administration that's making this very fluid. As we just heard, the current acting FEMA administrator was fired today. Rest assured, do not worry. I do not want that job. I'm staying here.
I'm named Christine Durant.
I'll just start with that.
Can I nominate Christine Durant to go to that job? She has good money.
So before we dive in, I need to make sure that everyone has a baseline understanding of how the funding works with FEMA. There are two big bags that are driving these issues right now. The first one is the Disaster Relief Fund. This fund supports major disaster declaration requests under the Robert T. Stafford Act, which is when a state and a locality's resources are exceeded, the governor can request federal support for recovery. Those funds are appropriated by Congress and come out of that bag right there. The second bag is preparedness grants. That's all of the hazard mitigation, planning, training, and exercises that FEMA disperses to federal, state, excuse me, state and local and tribal governments to prepare for disasters. Both these bags are in question in driving the issues and the transition that FEMA is going under right now. So there are three overarching issues. The first is who pays for preparedness and disaster recovery? So we're talking about both those bags. This current administration has been very clear. They want to take a step back from a federal perspective and put a lot of that funding and responsibility down to state and local governments. Number two is aligning all of the preparedness grants, that's just the one bag, you know, that's the pre-disaster grants, with the new administration's agenda. And then the third is focusing FEMA on those catastrophic disasters. And what do I mean about catastrophic disasters? I'm not talking about the 15 million, the 20 million, or the 50 million disasters that unfortunately we have all the time. What they're talking about is pulling FEMA back to only get engaged for the maximums of maximums around a billion-dollar disaster. So those are the big, big, so when they say catastrophic, they're talking big. The goal is to reduce federal costs and to expedite disaster assistance to survivors. The talk right now is all over the place. It's ranging from eliminating FEMA altogether to restructuring. There's been new bills passed just right now by a bipartisan group in Congress for restructuring, but there has been talk with this new administration to eliminate it. It's everywhere in between. So what is happening right now? So as I mentioned before, this new administration has made it extremely clear that they want to pass down the responsibilities for disaster response and recovery to the state and local governments. The details of what that actually means are just starting to emerge. On the grant side, in February, all the preparedness grants were placed on hold, meaning that the state could not draw down money. So when our grants, when we were told to hold on any invoicing from our grants, because essentially they hit timeout. That has since been lifted on March 6th due to a court order in New York, but it still remains to be seen how quickly it's going to start that process of again and turn on that bucket, that spigot to turn the water and push down that funding. The Building Resilience Infrastructure Communities Grant or BRIC grant, which I'm sure you a lot are familiar with, that has been canceled. That's hazard mitigation funds that, that grant funds. These pauses and cancellations on the grants tend to center around ensuring that these current, that the grants follow the current administration's priorities, which include removing all nexus to DEI, environmental, social, and governance, climate change, and sanctuary cities. So what's likely to come next? State disaster threshold costs under the Robert T. Stafford Act are likely to increase. So currently today, if the state wants to request a major disaster deck, which is the state of South Carolina asking the president for financial assistance following a disaster, we have to have a disaster that's more than 9.6. we have to have a disaster that's more than 9.6 million dollars. That's a, that's a pretty low threshold. The talk right now is that that is going to increase by maybe five X or even up to $1 billion. That detail is not clear. What that means is that that threshold is increased, the state and local governments will be responsible to recover those funds. Within the federal disaster, within the disaster relief funds, there are two types. There's two major programs. There's the Public Assistance Program and that's funding that's used to recover and goes to government entities, state, local, tribal governments. And then there's individual assistant grants. Those are the grants that go to individuals and households. We've already seen pullback of this administration approving assistance for, funding for IA disaster requests. There is lots of talk and likelihood that FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program could be reduced or eliminated. There is new models and that are being pitched of moving towards more, instead of a grant system, moving towards a community development block grant model, which means the federal government would cut the state a check and say, do what you want with it. Or the federal government could cut Charleston County a check and say, go do what you want with it. When you spend it, it's up to you. But those parameters and the mechanism which we would have to spend it, we would have to come up on our own. We're also going to likely see reduced federal dollars to state and local governments for resiliency projects. While I do not think it will be completely cut, there's definitely going to be a pullback, but here's the, the carrot. On the disaster recovery side, in order for a state to qualify for recovery funds, this administration wants the state and local governments to demonstrate that we have mitigated the disaster from happening before the governments then come in and help pay for recovery. Impacts to Charleston County, looking directly now at the Department of Emergency Management. Overall, we're actually not in bad shape. Our current budget, total budget, only about 10% of that comes from federal grants. However, that 10% does cover 90, about 100% of our training, equipment and public safety supplies and contractual services. Keep in mind though, that these grants had been greatly cut the past five years. We do have, we are in a good position in that many departments like ours across the country, the staff are fully funded by these homeland security grants. That's not the case here. So honestly, when I, when I learned of that coming on board, kudos to the county, kudos to you for funding these positions out of our general funds and not relying on these grants because if those grants would go away, many of these jurisdictions are going to lose their entire or a majority of their emergency management departments. So we're in a good position here. So let's look at the numbers specifically on what's at stake for Charleston County if a, if the major disaster declaration threshold is increased. In the past 11 years, South Carolina has had 13, eight of 13 disasters that would not meet that $50 million threshold if, if it was increased, which means that of those eight disasters, the state and local governments would, would face the cost share to recover from that incident. Since 2016, Charleston County has received over $30 million in disaster recovery reimbursements from the disaster relief fund. And that's us not have, we have not seen bid in the past 10 years and that's $30 million that would probably not meet this new threshold that we would have to find somewhere. So other impacts that we can probably expect is a slower and smaller federal response. For example, just two days ago, FEMA issued an internal memo to their staff on their guidance for this upcoming hurricane and wildfire, fire season. They've already declared that they are going to pull back from door-to-door canvassing following a disaster and the operations of disaster recovery centers. These are two key component functions to help getting resources out to survivors. So we're going to have to come up and fill that gap should we be hit. The FEMA's National Fire Academy, FEMA and the National Fire Academy Training and Exercise Support could be going away. That would, that would, that would impact free training opportunities for our county and municipal emergency managers and first responders. That would be a big loss. Potential increases to disaster insurance deductibles for public and private sectors. As I mentioned, the National Flood Insurance Program, if that were to be, to go away, around 68,000 residents in the county are currently covered under the National Flood Insurance Program because they are in flood-prone areas. They would have to go on the market to pick up additional insurance if they were dropped. So we can anticipate and brace for potential turbulence in flood insurance and disaster assurance markets. So what can the county do now? Many of these recommendations, we've already started, so I feel pretty good. The first is that we need to update our emergency operations plan to minimize the anticipated federal aid and support that we would get. The county has already took action on that and we have funding set aside to bring in a consultant to help rewrite that plan this upcoming fiscal year. Number two, we do need to build our financial reserves in the possibility that the federal disaster declaration threshold is increased and we need to have conversations with the state on who's going to come in and pay for that recovery. We need to continue to strengthen our state and regional partnerships and work together to think smarter about preparedness investments and not duplicate efforts when building capabilities, think really smart and then share those, those resources during an emergency. I still recommend that we all prioritize hazard mitigation projects. We need to find different funding avenues to keep these mitigation projects going. There are a number of studies out there that show for every $1 in mitigation, we get nine back on the backend for, for, for costs. We need to look at non-traditional methods or other pockets of funding that we can find to keep resiliency projects moving forward. Number five, the existing resiliency projects and the, and that are in Charleston County's pipeline that are funded by federal grants, I would recommend we push those through as soon as possible and get those projects started. They're less likely to be impacted or to be paused or canceled by FEMA if we already have a shovel in the, a shovel in the dirt. Number six, we need to assess our own disaster insurance policy. I believe we've already started to do that to ensure that we have the right coverage and that we're comfortable with our own coverage should we have to seek reimbursement for damages on, for our property. We need, we need to revamp our community preparedness and start sending a strong message to our residents that they need to be prepared and be more resilient, particularly for those first 72 to 96 hours after a disaster. We are coming, but that, but the, the scale and the resources that we would typically be able to call upon might not be there. So it might take us longer to get there to help people that are in need. Grant applications. We need to pivot our grant applications to now focus on critical infrastructure, which is a key priority for this administration. And number nine, we need to deepen our private sector, nongovernmental organizations and faith group relationships. They have tons of resources that they can bring to the table. They frankly can move faster than the county government and than the federal government. So we need to embrace those relationships and build those relationships and let them know that we're going to be counting on them to help, help us when we get hit. That's a lot of information. I'll pause now and open up to any questions or discussion.
All right. Is there?
So, so our deductible went up from 9.6 billion to 5 million, 5 billion.
Billion.
Yeah, 5 billion. That's basically what they're doing, increasingly deductible. It's like an insurance company. Way to go America.
I mean, I'm just, I'll save the commentary. Did I understand correctly, there's going to be less money for mitigation grants, but mitigation is going to be required to be demonstrated in order to qualify for money on the backend? Is that the dynamic we're talking about?
That's the conversation, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're, you're darned if you do, and if you don't do, you're darned again.
Well, one more question, actually. I mean, it seems to me that the benefit of having this done at a national level is you don't know where the hurricane's going to hit, you don't know where the tornado is going to touch down. Sort of serves as, there's an insurance function there, whatever. I guess we don't care about that anymore, but you know, obviously what scale, you talked about partnerships at the state level. Is there any idea of, of, that maybe we can at least do the next best thing and kind of mitigate those risks on a state level or, or again, regional level or, I mean, is there any progress on that? Do you have any sort of formulation of what that would look like? Is there anything we can do to support it?
We're working with the state right now. I think that we need to start to reach out to the governor's office and start having these conversations that if the threshold were to be increased, which I can, it's, it's going to be increased, it's just anyone's guess as to what threshold is what's going to be South Carolina's system to pay for recovery. Is that going to be the state? Is the state going to say, we're going to step in and cover what the federal government would do it? Is that going to say, is the state going to say, hey, we'll cover some, do we want the local government to pitch in? Those are the types of conversations that we have to be having right now.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr.?
Thank you for that presentation. It's very impressive. It's got us all scared out of our wits now, but.
So just.
But no, I, I guess I might just recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we direct the administrator to, to begin pursuing these, these nine or 10 areas of focus, especially I was moved by the, the commentary about projects that are in motion that once we get shovels in the ground, that this can be hard if we get pulled back. So I would, I would urge us to, to tell the administrator to press forward with these.
Second.
I'd probably move in second. Let's have some additional discussion. Mr. Kowalski.
I would just like to second that and maybe with some urgency because it's almost mid-May and we're approaching the summer and we have no idea what's in store for us every summer and these can become sooner than later. So it's a matter of some urgency and very sobering discussions. Because I remember, and you go everything that was available and everything and the image you're presenting is that we'd be on our own almost if the same thing happened.
I was choosing my words very wisely. This is not a, the sky is falling and this is not a nothing burger either. It's probably somewhere right in the middle, but this does need your attention. We are already leaning forward on, and not even waiting for FEMA to figure those things out, to start moving on those, those nine recommendations to best position us for when change does come. But there are more conversation does need to be had, particularly with the state in terms of what the structure is going to look like moving forward.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to activate these recommendations and to empower the administrator to empower staff to move forward? Let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. Thank you so much. The ayes have it. You know, again, elections have consequences and this is one of them. Yes?
I'd like to add, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that, that our emergency management personnel are permanent and they're not by grants. And I think that's, goes to show something good about our, our particular administration and our administrator and our planning. And so I'm, I'm very proud of that and I think I like the recommendations as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sasse. All right, we'll have a presentation of the FY25 budget, mid-year review and FY26 budget preview.
One of the items in the county's financial policies is that financial staff perform a mid-year review. We have done that. This takes a lot of effort and we do it in conjunction with the development of the 26 budget. In the general fund, this is a high-level summary of what we think those projections are going to look like. I'd like you to focus on that bottom right corner that's in, in yellow. That's good news. We have revenues coming in that are higher than the budget. Conversely, it's not as good news as what we've had in the recent past. That number is getting smaller. As far as the spending side, the county is also living within the budget and we're expecting some savings, although these savings are not as large as what they've been in the past, particularly on the personnel side that we lapsed eight or nine million dollars last year and we're projecting only four this year. Both those items that are highlighted are part of our funding mechanism for our one-time projects that we have annually in our budget, placing equipment and technology and maintaining our facilities. We did have a couple of hotspots that, that came out. The sheriff, as well as some of our other public safety areas are filling positions, which is not something that the budget was built to absorb. We had planned on a status quo in our public safety areas and we had savings built in as far as the personnel related to those vacancies. Deodis is also having some challenges as they work in, in a medical industry with costs going up significantly and revenues being challenged to increase. The good news is we do have savings to offset these increases. Savings amongst collective elected and, and appointed officials. We have savings in public works and facilities and we also had savings on the fleet capital buy this year for our vehicles. That's a high-level summary of the, the where we stand. We, we are in a good place financially. Turn our attention to a preview of the 26 budget. As you sat down this evening, you'll notice that you had a, a hard copy of, of the budget, which has detail in it as well as a summary presentation that we anticipate for May the As far as the tax rates that fall under county council, the only increase we have is in the Northern Fire District. We contract with the CMB Fire Department and they have asked for an increase in that particular area up to the maximum amount that we can levy. Please note that these mileage rates are before any adjustment for reassessment. This slide summarizes the overall spending and it breaks it down by the different fund types. You see that the general fund is up $24 million. We'll talk about that a, a little bit on the next slide. Debt service fund, we, we plan for our payments to go up in '26. We front-end load some of the debt, so we pay it off faster and save interest expense. It'll go back down some as we go into fiscal year '27. In the special revenue funds, that decrease is related to not asking council to appropriate money for road projects. We do continue the annual allocation program. Enterprise funds and internal service funds are relatively unchanged from a previous year. So overall, the proposed budget would be down slightly. As far as looking at the general fund highlights, we, we think this budget maintains level of service in many areas and we think it might enhance it in EMS with some additional staffing. And we're also starting to ramp up the opening of the bio center. We think the budget also maintains and improves in some areas our facilities and our technology. As we developed the 26 budget, we looked at the additional spending that we were encountering and we did tie that back to the strategic plan. This gives you a highlight of where the new positions are and what category they fall in the strategic plan. You'll notice that a majority of those are under public well-being or public safety. There's a quick synopsis of the dates for the budget. May the 22nd is the, the date that we have the more detailed discussion of everything. Hopefully first reading that evening and second, the, the following Tuesday council meeting. second, the following Tuesday council meeting, and then two weeks later, a public hearing and the third readings of the ordinances. And that concludes those two items.
All right. You've heard the presentation on the fiscal year '25 mid-year budget review and the fiscal year '26 budget preview. Any comments, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Thank you, Chairman Middleton. Matt, thank you very much for these overviews. Just a couple of comments and maybe one question on the mid-year. 7.7 revenues to the good, but 5.4 of that, if I recall, was interest income?
That's correct.
Which is, go away at some point.
Eventually. The interest rate that we've anticipated for '26 is 4%, but the interest rate that we're going to see as we finish out fiscal year '25 is around 5%.
Okay. All right. And the expenses were seven to the good, but we had that one-time Airbnb settlement included in that that we just got?
So for simplicity purposes, we assume that that council is going to designate that and move that forward into '26.
Okay.
So it is not reflected as savings. It is reflected as having been either spent or obligated.
Okay. One more question and a comment. The special revenue funds for '25, '26 down, you said it was related to roads. We're going to continue annual allocation, but what was the other part about the roads you mentioned?
We're not asking you to fund the road, the large roads products in the second sales tax. We're monitoring that cash flow, but we're not asking for additional appropriations at this time.
Okay. And thank you for pointing out the public well-being of the staffing and that, because that's sort of what we do. So that's kind of important, but thank you for that overview.
All right. Thank you so much. And in our budget conversations, we did ask them to lay it out based on the council priorities, so thank you for at least doing that much. And we look forward to the 22nd where we will be able to discuss this in depth. I do feel that you've already projected, and several of you may have already had individual budget meetings. No, not yet?
None.
Oh, nobody has?
We're waiting for you.
Oh, you're waiting for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so those budget meetings will be coming any day now, because I think we're meeting tonight, right? All right, very well. So you'll be getting invitations, so please take advantage of that. Again, today is May 8th, so you have roughly 14 days to get with staff, to ask all your questions, and to really tap through the binder that was provided. And let's make certain the budget is a moral document, and so whatever we vote upon finally, you know, becomes the stamp that we have put forward, you know, at least for that cycle, saying that these are the things that we agree should be priorities for funding in Charleston County, at least budgetarily. And so we do hear all of the conversations about some of the national, state-level uncertainties, and those things remain uncertain, but I did hear a lot of good news in some of these presentations based on the stability of how things have been funded in a conservative manner here in Charleston County, and we are so thankful that that continues. That ends all of our presentations. We will not have council comments tonight. Good evening.